I'd like to call to order the regular board meeting of Tuesday, April 9th, 2024. As is our custom, we begin our board meetings with the singing of our national anthem. We're very honored to have a pre-recorded video of students from Fish Creek School singing Oh Canada. I'd ask everyone to please stand and follow the lead of students. We would like to acknowledge the traditional territories and oral practices of the Blackfoot Nations, which include the Sissika, the Pekani, and the Guyana. We also acknowledge the Sutena and Stony and Dakota First Nations, the Métis Nation, and all people who make their home in the Treaty VII region of southern Alberta. I'd like to take this opportunity to welcome all of our staff and public in attendance at this meeting. Representing our stakeholders groups, I would like to recognize Stephanie Clarence from the Alberta Teachers Association Local 38, and Clay Gordon from the Canadian Union of Public Employees Local 40. Our first item of business is to approve the agenda for today's meeting. Ms. Miner, do you have any changes that need to be noted?
Madam Chair, the following agenda change request has been received. That Item 9.2.1, Chief Superintendent's Update Report, be removed from the consent agenda and added as Item 7.2 under Matters Reserved for Board Information.
Could I have a motion that the agenda be approved with the proposed changes? Thank you, Trustee Bolger. Those in favor? That is carried unanimously. First up, LEED plaque presentation this morning. I have the distinct pleasure of announcing confirmation of LEED certification for two CVE schools. LEED stands for Leadership in Energy and Environmental Design and is an internationally recognized mark of excellence for green buildings in over 160 countries. Green buildings create a healthier indoor environment for students, staff, and visitors. They are designed and built to conserve energy, decrease water consumption, minimize indoor noise pollution, and create better thermal comfort through increased insulation and improved temperature control. In accordance with the Board of Trustees' Operational Expectations 9, the CVE aims to ensure that all new schools are constructed to meet the LEED Silver level of certification. Today, I'm proud to share that Mahogany School has been granted LEED Gold Certification and Lake Shore School has been granted LEED Silver Certification by the Green Buildings Certification Institute. They join 18 other CVE schools that are LEED Gold and 20 that have received LEED Silver Certification, bringing us to a grand total of 40 CVE schools with LEED certification. At this time, I would ask Principal Tracy Kahn, Mahogany School, and Ian Farrow from Lake Shore School, and the Education Director Ann Art to come forward. And of course, this would not have been possible without the support of those who managed and supported the construction. So I'd ask that Alberta Amphastar Project Manager Rahim Catwa, along with CVE Facility Projects Team members David James, Olina Olsen, and Director Trevor Fenton to take their place alongside our principals. The plaques will be affixed within the schools as is required by the LEED program and will serve as a reminder to students and staff of how the CVE and their school is contributing to a sustainable future and promoting green learning environments where everyone can learn, live, and work. We're going to take a couple-minute recess, do a photo with school staff, administration, and the board. Okay, we're going to reconvene the meeting. Our next business deals with results focus. Today on our agenda is the annual monitoring of results for personal development. Chief Pittman, would you please introduce the report?
Good morning, Chair Hack and trustees. Today, we are pleased to be sharing the 2022-2023 Monitoring Report for Results for Personal Development. This report outlines our results as an organization and in, pardon me, as an organization in ensuring that in and through their learning program, every individual learner in the Calgary Board of Education will identify and actively develop their individual gifts, talents, and interests. This report includes evidence from 18 indicators: one Alberta Education Assurance Measure, three Report Card Measures, and 14 measures connected to the CVE Student Survey. For two of the three Report Card indicators, it should be noted that only data for students in grades 7, 8, and 9 is included as Report Card Results Reporting was suspended for kindergarten to grade 6 students for the 2223 school year. As well for the 12 of the 14 measures connected to the CVE Student Survey, the only data available for comparison is from 2018-19, prior to the COVID-19 pandemic. This was the last time these specific questions were administered. This highlights an opportunity to examine these results through the lens of a new baseline moving forward. With that in mind, the student evidence shows that we have much to celebrate. Across the CVE, 98.7% of students continue to experience success with the learning outcomes in health and in career and life management programs of study. This is also reflected in increases on both the physical health summary measure and the emotional health summary measure over the 2021-22 results. At this time, I'll turn it over to Interim Superintendent of School Improvement Mike Nelson to share further context for the report.
Thank you, Chief Superintendent Pittman. Trustees, although the results reporting for students in kindergarten through grade 6 was suspended in 2022-23 school year, there were notable areas of success to be shared for Division III CVE students. The percentage of students in grades 7 through 9 reporting to set and work towards learning goals and the percentage engaging in learning with confidence and persistence showed increase, both reaching their highest results over previous years. The report also shows that in terms of CVE students and the relationships to technology, we have both areas to celebrate and areas for growth. An example of celebration was that over 92% of CVE students identified they're both comfortable and able to use their technology skills in learning and reported increased opportunities to do so. In terms of opportunities for growth, while there was a decrease in student reporting that they trust the information that they see online, this is accompanied by a decrease in students reporting they're able to evaluate both visual and written online content. These decreases are compared to 2018-19 measures. This would have been prior to the pandemic and increased availability and usage of artificial intelligence. However, these results do provide us with clear direction for our continued work in supporting our students in making sense of online content in these new contexts. Another celebration area for growth is how students are engaging with others online. We can celebrate that over 91% of our students are careful with the information that they share online, taking care to protect themselves. We did however see decrease from 2018-19 in students reporting they communicate in the same way and treat others with the same respect online as they do in face-to-face interactions. At the school level and through system-level initiatives, work continues to be done in the areas of digital citizenship to support learners in these areas. Chair Hack, trustees, at this time, we welcome your questions related to the 2223 Monitoring Report for Results for Personal Development.
So trustees have received and reviewed the Chief Superintendent's Report regarding the annual monitoring of results for personal development for the 2022-23 school year. It's now the board's responsibility to consider the report as evidence of reasonable organizational progress in the results area. I now invite any trustee who has any questions about the monitoring report to offer them to the Chief Superintendent. I encourage you to limit your questions to those that will assist the board to make decisions regarding whether reasonable progress has been made to the ultimate achievement of this results policy. I remind trustees that the emphasis for monitoring results is not on compliance, but rather on reasonable progress. Trustee, may I go ahead?
I'll start with Policy 4.5, Indicator 4, which is the Emotional Health Summary Measure. I'm just wondering if you could speak to any local drivers that would account for the year-over-year increase in agreement, even if we're not quite back to the pre-pandemic results. I'm just wondering, is this a result of the wellness framework or what other drivers would have contributed to this?
Through the chair. So first of all, in regards to the wellness framework, I do want to share that this came forward in March, I think, March 23rd of 2023. So hoping that it's having some success in supporting this work, but really is still early days as we're implementing that. I do think that when we think about pre-pandemic to post-pandemic, some of the drivers are also about the increased number of co-curricular and extracurricular opportunities and also that we have our students in front of us so that we can actually do that purposeful work with our students in regards to the questions that they were asked.
Trustee Dennis, go ahead.
Thank you. So my first question is from page 29 of 60, or 4-29, and it's on STEM 4.3 Indicator 2. And so I'm pleased to see the level of agreement that our students are expressing in terms of accepting differences, understanding multiple views, and considering all sides of an issue. So pleased to see that. We're seeing less alignment, I guess, from our students on the comfort with variability. And I think sometimes we could be tempted to see maybe that as not positive. I guess I'm looking at it, you know, trying to look at it in more positive light, saying, you know, it's okay to wrestle with things, right? So when you're considering, right, differences, multiple views, and multiple issues, I think it's important actually to wrestle with all of those viewpoints in order to, you know, be able to come to a conclusion on your own. And it's okay to sort of live with some discomfort and some variability for a time. But I would just appreciate just your insights on those results and how you're interpreting them for us.
Through the chair. So there is high level of agreement in this indicator. Due, I believe, to the strong work of our teachers and staff. I would suggest, like we've heard in the boardroom before, it's post-pandemic and that's brought new realities to our classrooms and for our students. I would echo what you shared, that students grappling with the various sides of an argument or a concept is really important work. And we know that whether through our wellbeing framework or through our programs or studies or that the work within our teachers do in the classroom is about supporting students to be adaptable, to create resiliency. And that comes through also making mistakes and then also engaging into those conversations with our peers and our teachers. So we have continued work, I think, as all of us do, and our teachers are taking up that work, and the wellbeing framework does definitely support that work further.
Jesse Bolger, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair Hack. So on page 47 of 60, Policy 4.6 Indicator 4 refers to the critically assessing online information. And in response to the survey question, I trust the info I see online, the result was 46.9%. And so at first, I thought this was the most outstanding piece of survey data I've ever seen. But then I started to worry that perhaps students are discounting reliable factual information that they encountered as well. And obviously, we want our students to be critical thinkers, validate information, and use trusted sources when accessing information online. So can you remind me, are there any specific curricular expectations in Alberta education's programs of studies, like in social or P and wellness, related to critically assessing online information? Or is this something that's just organically done throughout instruction? Thank you.
Through the chair. Lots of things organically occur in the classroom, but there is specificity in how we analyze information, specifically online information, just as it parallels when we went to school about analyzing the information that potentially was in a text. It is important to share that in Alberta, there is an information and communication technology, or ICT, program of studies. And that ICT program of studies is overlaid across all of our subject areas or other programs of studies. So whether in social studies or English Language Arts or science, students should be examining that and their teachers are working with their students to have critical analysis and to look at information online or digital and also paper-based to examine the value of that information. We also do see specificity, as I said, in social studies and in health and life skills, COME, PhysEd, and wellbeing curriculums as well.
Jesse Dennis, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. My next question is on page 70, sorry, no, hang on. Yep, sorry, page 37 of 60. And Indicator 3 of STEM 4.5. And so just reflecting on making friends and relationship strategies. So considering overall social and emotional health and generally just success in life and relationships, it's important to be able to, you know, make and maintain positive friendships and relationships. That skill is, those skills are vital. I'm wondering if you can provide some insight as to the student responses to these themes? And there are a few things come to my mind, I guess, as I looked at the, as I looked at the report. I'm thinking about, of course, ongoing impacts of the pandemic, soft skills that would develop, you know, over time and with some practice, I guess, and also increased use of technology to communicate rather than in-person interactions. I think those develop relationships differently. And the impact of social media and how students might perceive themselves and their lives in relation to, you know, their peers that they might see on social media. So those are some of the things that came to my mind when I considered maybe some of the, you know, the level of agreement or responses from our students here. But would be happy to hear more from you.
So first, I appreciate your comments. We do see that our students overall in this indicator do score high, but we have seen some decreases. I think the focus on a social-emotional learning foundational skills through our wellbeing framework, but that's also focused in our health and life skills and in the PhysEd and wellbeing curriculum, helped support this work. I think if you look at research regarding the pandemic, it does talk about there was a loss of some of those interactions. And now students, as I said earlier in an earlier question, are in front of us with their peers and so that we continue to support them as they build healthy, productive relationships with their peers.
Jesse Close?
Thank you, Chair Hack. I just want to drill down a little bit further there as a follow-up because I definitely agree that our focus on building healthy relationships is core to mental health, at core to student success. But we've seen media stories, both in Canada and the States, around the impacts of using social media and schools are responding in a different way as far as the decision-making goes. I know that last year when we talked about this with the report, that one of the responses was that each of our individual schools have their own response to cellphone use in schools. And I can remember you saying that, you know, sometimes they have it on the away function that might be in their lockers. But I'm just curious about how we're responding or what we're doing to address this issue that seems prevalent in our community across Canada.
Through the chair. I'm going to start at a high level and if there's anything I missed. Certainly, Interim Superintendent Nelson, you're welcome to chime in. You are correct that within the CVE currently, and it continues now, is that it is an individual school process that is supported by system guidance around questions and considerations to use not solely the enactment of a policy as a thou shall, but a discussion of why and purpose. That said, I think the reality of what that experience can be in a school with many different pressures can also be a challenge. And so as an organization, what we do currently have is strong documentation that supports instruction relative to digital citizenship, an understanding of who students are online, including on their cellphones, the manner in which cellphones are used, et cetera. So there's strong supporting documents. What we are currently doing and alongside, I think, and I'm sure we're going to have a discussion around policy soon as we talk about results policy more broadly, is that this is a consideration alongside artificial intelligence, other considerations of privacy and other elements that as a board is a welcome opportunity to explore. And what administration is continuing to do is gather research, different approaches from across the country and in other nations, in fact, and to review how do those policy decisions land within our context? What opportunities might we have? It often is seen as a simple solution. There's a yes or a no answer. And in some cases, that may be true. That said, we need to consider what those implications may be and welcome an opportunity to discuss that further with the board.
I'm going to ask, I guess, a very general question as trustees ponder any further questions they have. Just on the whole report, given the context of the times that we're living in now, is this what we expected to see in terms of, I know you talked about like this new baseline. I'm trying to judge reasonable progress when comparing to a time that maybe isn't comparable. And I know it's talked about in the report like that. I know we're looking at DIV 3 only for certain ones. I know that was a motion that the board made, so understand that. What I'm trying to get is, were there any surprises in there? Or is this kind of what we were expecting to see in terms of results for?
Thank you, Chair Hack. What I would highlight is reasonable progress is contextual, as you've highlighted. And that context is based on a number of aspects for the board to consider. One is absolutely a comparison to previous performance and that performance or progress over time or shifts in those data. The other piece is immediate context. And the board historically has applied that mindset when looking at our results and understanding where we are, and especially given the last five years. This report really does highlight that what was our reality in 2018-19? What has shifted over this time period and where are we now? To your question of, is this what administration would expect? Would expect when considering the context? Yes. And we do actually continue to exhibit strong results, broadly speaking, when you think about context as well as some other data sets. So if you'll just indulge me a little bit. For our indicators related to the report cards, the results are nearly 97%. So in some cases, maintaining that high level is reasonable progress over time. And it's higher overall for students who are experiencing success. For the 12 indicators that are connected to the CVE Student Survey, where our only other data point is 2018-19, our overall student levels of agreement remain higher than 70%. And eight of those are over 80%, and three are over 88% in agreement. So when broadly asking reasonable progress and maintaining given context of what was experienced during the pandemic, there's a belief that, yes, we are still having pieces. It does, though, point to specific actions and that's the other opportunity that we have as administration. The other piece that I would highlight is for the remaining two indicators connected to the CVE Student Survey, where we do have year-over-year data, we see, similar to other student survey indicators, that the 2223 results are lower than the 2018-19 results. However, they are higher than the 2122 results. So we have on a number of places where we are able to, where we see the gap of 2018-19, we look at our 2122, and we look at our 2223 results, we are actually seeing an upswing again. And so that is what we would expect to see. If we saw a continued decrease in that area, you might be receiving a different response from your chief. And I would also highlight that the other component or measure within that is the returning rate. And the gap between CVE and provincial results narrowed to its lowest point in five years. So even with those points, we do see that it is what we would expect and then provide that to the board to determine reasonable progress.
Trustees, any other questions or comments on the report? Jesse Dennis, go ahead.
Thanks for being patient there, Chair. I was contemplating whether I would go with this question, but I will because I think it's interesting. And so it's on 4.2 Indicator 4. And so it's on four point two indicator one and where it says percentage of students in kindergarten to grade nine reported to set and work toward learning goals as measured by student report cards. So if you'll indulge me for a second, you know, I'll just reflect on even my own daughter's school experience, in particular kindergarten, all three of them had the same most amazing Mrs. McDonald as their kindergarten teacher and she was a master, um, at teaching kindergarten. And I saw in her class how she would, um, adapt projects to suit, you know, where the level of, you know, each of those students were and how hard she worked to make sure that kids looking for more challenge were getting it. Students who maybe, you know, needed more support in other areas, they had it. And so when I look at, I guess, in terms of our youngest learners, right, so those division one learners. So I think work toward learning goals, that makes a lot of sense to me and how that can happen. But in terms of, we, we also say reported to set, I guess. So how do we support those young learners in terms of setting goals towards their learning?
So through the chair, so first, uh, shout out to Ms. McDonald. So I, uh, do want to share with you that, um, while we have only shared the div three data, historically, the div one and div two data, um, in this indicator, um, actually outscored, uh, was equal or better. So it's always important to share that. Um, in regards to the specificity around, you know, uh, our div one students, um, I think teachers work every single day about setting goals and those goals could be, of course, around our academics of, uh, your next goal for writing, your next goal for reading. Sometimes it's even about your next goal about tying your shoes. Um, one of the things that is important to recognize that in our assessment guide across K to twelve, one of the principles is that students should be part of the process around assessment. So when we're providing students with feedback, it's always for learning. And, and away, the feedback that we're providing is setting the next step and learning and the next goal and learning, whether that's about writing a, a sentence, a paragraph, learning something in physical education, or learning about the world of science.
Trustee Dennis, go ahead.
And just a quick follow-up, just because I think it's cute. Um, and it may be the goal of being the next student who gets to carry the attendance down to the office. Being that responsible.
Very true. Seeing no other questions or comments, any trustee who wishes to bring forward a motion regarding exception or recommendation should provide the motions to the corporate secretary and to all trustees by noon Thursday, April eighteenth, twenty twenty-four. This item will be placed on the April twenty-third, twenty twenty-four agenda for the board's consideration. Next on our agenda is the annual monitoring of our operational expectations two, learning environment and treatment of students. Chief Superintendent Pittman, would you please introduce the report?
Thank you, Chair Hack and trustees. Today we present the monitoring report for operational expectation two, learning environment, treatment of students. The data collected for this monitoring report applies to the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three school year. And we have included data indicating the creation and maintenance of a learning environment that is safe and respectful, and that supports students to participate fully in their learning. We are pleased that our schools have demonstrated continued success in supporting students to feel safe and cared for in our schools. The evidence presented today indicates compliance with six of the seven indicators. Indicator two point one point three, related to agreement with the safe and caring suite of questions from the Calgary Board of Education Annual Safe and Caring Schools Result as determined by Alberta Education's Accountability Pillar Survey, is noted as non-compliant. CBE administration is committed to achieving compliance on this indicator. As set out in the capacity building section, recently implemented frameworks, as referenced in previous reports, our student wellbeing framework and Indigenous education holistic lifelong learning framework provide critical support in this area. And we look forward to providing the board with the improvements in the next monitoring report. Interim Superintendent Nelson will take you through the remainder of the report. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Superintendent Pittman. As shared, the report for operation expectation two continues to demonstrate CBE and our school's commitment to providing safe and positive learning conditions for each student that fosters a sense of belonging and a respect for diversity. The report includes evidence that shows that there is a clearly defined, system-wide student code of conduct implemented and reviewed annually, as well as one hundred percent compliance with emergency practices and procedures and security clearance protocols for volunteers. Evidence also shows that students with individual program plans were fully supported through planning and transition meetings. And for students struggling with attendance and having, uh, having had involvement with the CBE attendance team, we continue to see low rates of recidivism, with thirty-seven percent of these students showing a five percent or more improvement in attendance. That said, as Chief Superintendent noted, the percentage of student responses indicating agreement with the safe and caring suite of questions from Alberta Education's Accountability Pillar Survey decreased by two point three percentage points. This indicator allowing for a two percent, uh, percentage point variation to be compliant was point three percentage points outside of that margin. Closer analysis of the Alberta Education Accountability Pillar Survey results highlight that while there were decreases across divisions that contribute to the decrease in results, most notable were decreases in the students in grade seven to nine responses. This has highlighted areas of focus across all levels with specific attention to be paid to middle school learners and learning environments. To address the overall decrease, teachers, school, and system leaders working with overall system data and school data dashboards will continue to review and design targeted actions that promote inclusivity and equity and prioritize student wellbeing through explicit instruction and assessment practices. This work will be supported and informed by the foundational framework documents and companion guides, including both the Indigenous Whole List of Lifelong Learning and Student Wellbeing Frameworks. It should be noted that the student wellbeing framework was first shared with the system last year immediately following the administration of the Alberta Education Assurance Survey. So it is important, excuse me, so its opportunity for impact would not have yet been realized in the student and school response. We look forward to seeing and sharing with you the impact of this work moving forward. At this time, we welcome any questions that you may have.
The operational expectations policies define the degree of authority transferred to the chief superintendent as she makes day-to-day decisions. The board trustees has previously reviewed the reasonable interpretations of this operational expectation and approved that the chief superintendent reasonably understands the values underlying this policy and that the indicators previously provided by the chief superintendent are acceptable to the board. I now invite any trustee who has questions about the report to offer them to the chief superintendent. Let me remind the board that the purpose of considering this report is to satisfy that the board that its policies values were complied with during the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three school year. And I encourage trustees to limit their questions and comments in support of monitoring. Trustee Close, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair Hack. Um, I, I have probably two comments, but wouldn't mind a, a response. Um, so when you did speak about the work that we're doing, uh, focused on attendance. And when I read this report, I saw a straight-through line from, from that work to the results. Can you just emphasize that again for me?
Uh, through the chair, I would emphasize, I believe, in three ways. Number one, um, we do need to acknowledge that we have seen, um, student attendance decrease post-pandemic. Uh, the three ways I would address that though, um, one, in general, that isn't as explicit in this report is that every day our school administrators and teachers are working with families to support them and have our students come to school. Number two, the report does talk about that we do have, we have, excuse me, we have, um, attendant support for our schools that support hundreds of students through consults with school-based administrators or even potentially teachers. And then the third level that is more explicit in this report is we do have students that struggle with attendance that go through a very formal process that we support them and that we work with the ministry. And this report, uh, speaks to the success of those students that end up with that highest level of support. That support improves their attendance and getting to school.
Thank you. Trustee Close, go ahead.
Not a, not a follow-up, but more of a comment around the, the survey results. And, and I was just so intrigued, and I have shared this previously, but I was so intrigued at the chief, uh, superintendent's, uh, student advisory when they were reviewing some of the social wellbeing questions. And, and so it's sometimes it's the way we ask our questions that, uh, determine, uh, results. So I just found it fascinating that one of the ones that really grabbed my heart and head is, is there, they were asking the, asked the question, I'm, I'm an ally to people, uh, who look, behave, speak, and/or identify differently than me. And there was such this robot bust conversation around, but am I an active ally? Do I feel safe to be an active ally? And so I think, I think going forward, I'm really going to be intrigued to see, um, the refinement of some of the questions that we ask students. And then of course, as trustee Downey pointed out, making sure that students actually participate in answering, in answering the surveys. But I don't know if you have a comment or a follow-up to, to that.
Through the chair, I, I think within the context, so I appreciate you sharing that perspective. And certainly it's the, the incredible value reflected on hearing from our students uh, across the entirety of the system, uh, especially in, in terms of our high school students. With respect to OE two and the particular survey measures, those ones are Alberta Education's assurance measures. And so we're limited in our ability to, uh, those, those questions remain the same. I think that consideration of the zero point three percent outside of the, i- is a conversation. Uh, what we focus on as administration is what are our clear actions? And we know that increasing complexity of every relationship. So we've had a theme of talking about the importance of relationships, the ability to manage ambiguity or difference, the ability to respond to that and feel safe while doing that as we come to OE two. Um, that there is an opportunity there to really consider what those realities look like in terms of structural supports in schools.
Trustee Vukadinevich, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair Hack. According to policy two point one, it says that the chief superintendent shall provide safe and positive learning conditions for each student that foster a sense of belonging and a respect for diversity. And one of the board-approved indicators for this policy is that principals confirm that each volunteer has security clearance prior to beginning their volunteer service. So my question is, why is this requirement so broad, applying to each and every volunteer, rather than only applying to volunteers whose volunteer role might allow them to be, uh, alone with a child? Why, for example, does the CBE require a volunteer clearance to volunteer at a school picnic in the evenings when other parents are present and children are under the supervision of their own parents or guardians who have brought them to the event? Or why, to provide another example, does the CBE require a volunteer clearance to volunteer as the secretary for school council meetings in the evenings when there are no children around? Or to sign up to volunteer for a casino shift for school fundraising? And to provide context, the reason I ask this question is because our public Calgary Board of Education schools provide a world-class education to students in Calgary. And we need the support of parents and guardians to make that happen. I feel we need parents and guardians to feel welcome in our schools and to feel like they are part of our community.
Through the chair, um, I maybe focus on three main areas. Why I, uh, am in strong support of your operational expectation in this area. Uh, first of all, it speaks to our liability insurers. And specifically in regards to the abuse coverage that they provide to the CBE, the fact that we can point to this operational expectation requirement, uh, influences very favorably the premiums that we pay. So it, it, it helps lower our insurance rates to be able to show that we require all adults, um, that work or come to volunteer with the CBE to have a police information check and a vulnerable sector check. Next, um, this blanket approach, if you want, to, uh, police information checks and vulnerability checks aligns with what we do with staff as well, as I was mentioning previously. And we know that there are many positions within the CBE, staff positions, where folks will never come into contact with students. And so in this case, it's just simply good risk management practice. It's, it's a best practice to help, um, mitigate and control that risk. And it's, and it's, in this case, been extended to volunteers as well. And, and lastly, I'd like to underscore that the police information checks are valid for five years. And so although it might take some time and effort to initially go through the process, by having that, um, require also the vulnerability, vulnerable sector check, we allow that volunteer greater possibility during that five-year period to volunteer in different roles. And so whereas maybe initially they might have only envisaged that they were going to be doing a casino or, uh, one event, if later on, the next month, the next school year, they decide to volunteer for something else, now they have that police information check that's available to them. They don't have to go through the process. It's actually then reducing the overall administrative effort on themselves and having to repeat the process on the school who doesn't now have to worry about, well, wait a minute, is this individual cleared to work in this kind of volunteer activity? Or are they only cleared for that kind of, of volunteer activity?
Trustee Vukadinevich, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair Hack, and thank you, Superintendent Britton. That was enlightening. Um, I, uh, talking about the same, uh, issue, but now from another angle. I've heard complaints from parents about how expensive and time-consuming it is to comply with this requirement for security clearance. For example, there's confusion about whether or not the vulnerable sector box needs to be checked off, which you just mentioned, so it sounds like it probably should be. Um, and I know that I myself have sometimes not been cleared, which is the right box to check off. And sometimes applications are rejected and volunteers have to start the paperwork from scratch just because they've selected the wrong type of clearance, which to me is an indication that perhaps it's the form that just needs to be better designed to clearly indicate which box people need to check off for security clearances in order to volunteer for CBE schools. So my question is, are there any updates with regards to the expense and the paperwork involved with applying and reapplying for these police clearances?
Through the chair, um, we have been working very closely with the Calgary Police Service and Volunteer Alberta to come to a, a solution on this. And at this point in time, it's looking optimistic that before the end of this school year, we'll be in a situation to be able to have that fee covered once again by Volunteer Alberta. Um, it involves batch files and uploads and downloads and well beyond my ability to, to fully understand. But we're trying to obviously avoid having schools having to go through all of that uh, information technology kind of work and for it to be processed centrally. And, and then for parents ultimately who are, and, and members of the public who are interested in volunteering to be able to do that and not have a cost associated with that. And, and in fact, to highlight the, um, commitment of the Calgary Police Service on, in this regard, there is also a vendor fee that they had, um, that is associated with the, the application that is being used of six dollars and twenty-five cents. And they have indicated that they are willing to waive that. And so then the fifteen-dollar volunteer fee would be covered by Volunteer Alberta once we've completed this work. Part of that work, of course, also will be to ensure that all the instructions are updated, uh, both, uh, also on the website, both for schools as to what they need to do and for parents. Um, if, if parents and/or prospective volunteers, um, are finding the, the instructions confusing, um, certainly the paperwork isn't something that we have influence, uh, as to what is required. It is the police service that demands certain information. Um, it is something that certainly as we are reviewing those instructions, we can turn our mind to, to see, is it as clear as it has to be? Uh, to ensure that the process is, is as rapid as possible for parents, recognizing again that once they finally manage to make it through, they're good for five years.
Trustee Vukadinevich, go ahead.
Yes, just a, a follow-up comment to say that I'm very grateful to hear this update. That's wonderful. And once again, I'm struck by how lucky we are at the Calgary Board of Education to have such a, a strong and talented senior administrative team. So thank you. Trustees, with any other questions on OE2? Okay. And now, oh. Pardon me, our next item of business is the annual monitoring of operational expectations six asset protection. Chief Pittman, would you please introduce the report?
Chair Hack and trustees, we have many reports today, just as an aside. Today, we present the monitoring report for operational expectation six asset protection. The data collected for this monitoring report applies to the 2223 school year, and we have included data indicating that CBE is properly maintaining, adequately protecting, and appropriately using all organization assets. The evidence presented today indicates compliance with all six indicators. Note that indicator 6.1.3 is no longer applicable due to changes to government audit and reporting processes. At this time, we're happy to answer any questions you have.
The operational expectation policies define the degree of authority transferred to the chief superintendent as she makes day-to-day decisions. The Board of Trustees has previously reviewed the reasonable interpretation of this operational expectation and approved that the chief superintendent recently understands the values underlying this policy and that the indicators previously provided by the chief superintendent are acceptable to the board. And now, if any trustee has any questions about the report, to offer them to the chief superintendent. Trusty Vukadinevich, go ahead.
Thank you. According to indicator 6.1.3, the chief superintendent shall see that no more than 5% of CBE schools audited by Alberta Infrastructure will have a facility condition index of marginal. And of course, as we see, this indicator is not applicable because the province stopped auditing schools in 2020. My question is, what was the dollar value of deferred maintenance at CBE schools in 2020, when the province stopped auditing schools? And what is the dollar value of deferred maintenance today? Has it decreased, stayed the same, or grown? And what does deferred maintenance mean on the ground in a school? Could I get some examples of risks that can arise due to deferred maintenance?
Through the chair. So the 202021 deferred maintenance value calculated by the province, it was approximately 160 million. They also identified a little over 870 million in deferred lifecycle costs. The difference between deferred maintenance and deferred lifecycle being that deferred maintenance might mean that the building component or system is starting to fail. So for example, the roof is leaking in a part of the building somewhere versus deferred lifecycle, that 870 million ticket is more along the lines of this building component was designed to last 20 years and it's now 25 years old. It's still working. The risk is of course that it might fail tomorrow, but it's still working. Based on our 10-year average in terms of like the deterioration of buildings that, that we've seen, we can estimate that we are seeing our deferred maintenance probably grow by around $50 million a year. Of course, we, so the industry sort of standard or best practice is that there should be an investment of between 1% to 2% of the total real property portfolio value in maintenance and recapitalization. So with a portfolio of 52, or $5.2 billion approximately in value, we should be investing between 52 million and 104 million to attend to that. So that, that does align with sort of the industry standard best practice to help compensate. That being said, the infrastructure maintenance and renewal funding and the capital maintenance renewal funding that is provided by the province to undertake major engineered maintenance and recapitalization has averaged over the past five years at around $38 million. So we are seeing ultimately a net growth in our deferred maintenance as a result of the underinvestment in this area.
Justy May, go ahead.
I have a follow-up on this indicator, which I know sounds funny since we're not, it's not applicable. But it says that they're no longer auditing schools as of 2020. But can you explain how this worker tracking is internally monitored to ensure that we're not operating facilities that are within that marginal range? Like what are we, what are we doing on our, on our side?
Through the chair. So that's a two-part question. I would say initially what we are doing is simply having knowledge of our, of our buildings by the fact that we have staff in all of our buildings. So whether that's educational staff, or whether it's our custodial staff, or whether it's our own trades personnel that attend to these different schools, they are observing what is occurring within the building, they're reporting that back through our centralized system that manages our facilities, and that provides us instantaneous awareness that the trades, as well as our, our custodial staff, have access ultimately to internal technicians, engineers, architects, as well as of course, we can reach out and secure the services of external consultants when we're needing to get a specific skill set that we might not have internally to verify a situation that might have been raised to our attention. From a longer-term perspective, we are looking to put a procedure in place that of course won't be the same as what the province provided previously from a condition, facility condition assessment, but will try to emulate it to a certain degree. Now, we won't be able to replicate what the province had in place because it's just simply too expensive. We don't have the resources and the funding for that. But again, we're, we're looking to put in, in place something that will supplement sort of our day-to-day knowledge of the buildings through internal assessments of our facilities. And that we'll be able to then report back to you with that information on how our schools are doing.
Trusty Vukadinevich, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair Hack. I'm concerned to hear that we have, we're experiencing net growth in deferred maintenance. And then compounding that, I'm thinking about the utilization that we have of our schools. In a recent interview, our board chair Laura Hack highlighted that the utilization rate of some high schools in North Calgary is 159%. In the interview with the Calgary Herald, Chair Hack said, could you imagine sending your child to a school that is 160% full? I couldn't. And I must say, I couldn't imagine either. My oldest child attends a high school with an extremely high utilization rate too. And at this high school, the hallways are packed and kids are sharing lockers with four kids to a locker, which I find shocking. And my child's high school isn't even at 159% utilization yet. My understanding is that there are currently 65 CBE schools operating at 100% capacity or higher, which is an astonishing statistic. And our average utilization rate across all schools is currently 95%. And because schools are considered fully utilized at 85%, the CBE's system-wide average utilization rate of 95% means we have more kids learning in hallways and corridors and more students overflowed and unable to enroll in their nearest school. We're full now and running out of space. So I'm wondering, are there any risks to the CBE's facility conditions and to our assets from schools that have a utilization rate of greater than 100%? Is there any greater wear and tear on bathroom fixtures, doors, floors, on everything when schools have utilization rates as high as 159%?
Through the chair. Maybe I'll, I'll start actually by recognizing that I missed part of your previous question. And you were talking about the extra risks that we might be posed by this growing deferred maintenance. And I think it makes for a good link into your question here as well. And so the kinds of risks that you would see with deferred maintenance, when a system is starting to fail, what you're seeing is something like, again, I was referencing like a leak on a roof. And so maybe that leak is going to get worse, or we have to be a little bit more present and aware of the risk of mold or other issues that might be generated. Maybe the, the paint on the walls or the carpet might not be as fresh as we would expect or want within a school. Or maybe that latch on that door doesn't quite latch like it should, and somebody, you know, putting a, pulling on it strongly enough might be able to open an exterior door and access the school. So those are the kinds of, of risks that we're posed with, where we're not able to attend immediately, but we're managing that risk through different measures until such time as we can get around to it and actually make that a priority. Now, when you start seeing a school that is, is being very heavily utilized, you would essentially see those building systems that get the most use because of people be the ones that will get the, sort of deteriorate the faster. So something like the building roof or the mechanical system won't necessarily change, or the lights in that building, because they're always going to be on and they're, whether there's 10 people in the building or whether there's 110 or 1,010, it's always just doing its thing and it's not going to get any more wear and tear. But certainly, I think you may have touched on some of the areas, whether it's faucets, doors, these toilets and floors, flooring systems, because of course, people are walking in and out and wearing things down. Those are the kinds of areas where we'll see more and increased levels of wear and tear because of the higher numbers of people within a building.
Justy Dennis, go ahead.
Thank you. Moving on to a different part of the report, so I'm looking at 6.1.1. And I see there that 62 schools and service units receive training from the records management team. And so how do we identify, you know, said schools or service units that will be receiving this training? And do we do periodic audits of schools or service units to ensure proper support for compliance? And what led me to that question is the work that we do with our auditors in terms of, you know, we audit specific schools or a certain number of schools each year. So that's kind of what led me to that. I'm just wondering if that's a practice that we mirror also to ensure compliance here.
So through the chair, there are two sources of requests for training for school or service unit-based staff in records management. The first would be the schools or service units themselves requesting some training and support, so they self-acknowledge that they have some learning to do and we provide that support. The second area comes from the fact that unlike in the past, most records flow through the centralized records management team. So they have access and exposure to the actions and activities of schools and service units. And should they identify some deviations from the expected standards, they will reach out to the schools and service units and suggest that it's time for a training opportunity. So that's how they get selected. To the second part of your question, we no longer do periodic audits we had in the past. They were fairly narrow scope. And as I just referenced, because now the vast majority of records due to digitization flow through the records management team, that gets us, gives us the opportunity to review those records almost in real time at much greater scope.
Justy Dennis, go ahead.
Thanks. So my last question, I guess, on this report, 6.1.5, just a little more information, what would constitute a complaint related to violation of intellectual property rights? And what are some of the things that we do to ensure that no violations occur?
So through the chair. So a complaint would be in the nature of us perhaps not crediting somebody's original work in something that the CBE generates. It may be the use of a technological application without paying the appropriate licensing fee, something along that line. So what do we do to address that? In most cases, the CBE is fairly proactive and has agreements in place. So if we're using, for example, a technology application, we will have an arrangement with the vendor of that application that clearly sets out what the licensing fees are and so we can use it appropriately and make sure we have the appropriate number of licenses. On the research front, similarly, we enter into agreements with whatever third party might be undertaking research, and those documents set out upfront who ultimately owns the intellectual property to try and minimize any complaints. So, you know, knock on wood, I think most of the sort of precautionary measures we put in place have allowed us to operate without any complaints.
Any further questions? We now come to the point where trustees are asked to identify their intention to bring forward any motion related to compliance with the operational expectations two, learning environment and treatment to students, or operational expectation six, asset protection. Any trustee who wishes to bring forward a motion regarding exceptions to finding the evidence to be compliant, or a motion of accommodation for exceptional performance in a particular area, should provide the corporate secretary and all trustees with the proposed motion by noon Thursday, April 18th, 2024. If there are no exceptions or accommodations, then this item will be placed on the consent agenda for the April 23rd, 2024 board meeting. With the motions that the board trustees approves that the chief superintendent is in compliance with the provisions of OE2, learning environment, treatment of students, and OE6, asset protection. We're going to take a, at a 12-minute recess here and return about 12:25. Okay, let's reconvene in the meeting. Next on our agenda is item 7.
Okay, let's reconvene in the meeting. Next on our agenda is item 7.
All right, let's reconvene. Next on our agenda is item 7.1, budget assumptions report. Chief Superintendent Pittman, would you please introduce the report?
Thank you, Chair Hack and trustees. Today, we present the budget assumptions report for the 2024-25 school year. This report lays out the CBE's operating context as well as the revenues and expense assumptions that will be incorporated into our budget. This is an important document in our budget planning process and later this week, all schools will receive their individual funding to plan for next year, known as the RAM. And later in May, administration will present CBE's overall budget to you. The CBE will receive almost $1.4 billion for the next school year. This is an increase of $85 million in provincial funding year over year, which we are grateful for. Our priority will be hiring classroom teachers and school support staff and using the dollars to offset rising operational costs. In fact, more than $1 billion is being allocated to CBE's 251 schools and the more than 140,000 students we expect to welcome in the fall. CBE continues to experience significant enrollment growth and our student population is becoming increasingly diverse. We need to balance the impacts of growing and changing enrollment on our infrastructure, our educational programming, transportation services, technology requirements, and more. Trustees is an organization that provides direct teaching and learning services to students in Calgary. Growth and inflation are directly and immediately felt in CBE classrooms system wide. The budget development process in front of us is about recognizing our current realities and making the best decisions for students and staff. Our focus will always be to provide programming, supports, and services that meet the needs of students while being responsible stewards of public dollars. I'll now turn it over to CBE's chief financial officer, Brad Grundy.
Thank you, Chief Pittman, through the chair. Trustees, the budget assumptions report is a requirement set out in your operational expectation five, financial planning. As the chief mentioned, as part of the budget development process, administration is obligated to set out the material budget assumptions that will be incorporated into the budget for the upcoming school year. As well, by longstanding tradition, the presentation of the budget assumptions report is a necessary precursor to the issuance of the school-based budgets for this coming school year. As referenced, this year's resource allocation method, or RAM, will be rolled out on April 11th. That timing is critical as it allows our school-based administration and staff the time necessary to thoughtfully plan for the coming school year. It also allows sufficient time for the hiring of new staff and the orderly movement of existing staff between schools. As noted, this year, the RAM will exceed $1 billion for the first time in CBE history. That is a consequential sum of money by almost any metric. Given the importance of the bar to the CBE's overall financial governance, I want to emphasize a few points that are set out in the report. First, as your administration progresses through the budget development cycle, I want to emphasize that the CBE's values are central to our work. Specifically, students come first, learning is our central purpose, and public education serves the common good. In budget terms, that means we will prioritize funding for teaching and learning in the classroom. The CBE will be hiring more school-based staff to support the increased enrollment and the increasing needs of students. This means the CBE will augment the supports and services in the face of growing complexity. Living our values, however, is influenced by operational by the operational context in which the CBE finds itself. As noted by the chief superintendent, that context has shifted significantly over the last few years, and those shifts have immediate and direct impacts on the CBE. That challenge, sorry, just two seconds. Consider, for example, that for the 24-25 school year, we will see the CBE managing through the third consecutive year of significant enrollment growth. Over that three-year period, the CBE will have grown by more than 20,000 students, the equivalent of more than 11 large high schools. It's no surprise that significant and sustained enrollment growth has a myriad of impacts across the system. Those impacts include, but are not limited to, continued upward pressure on class size, continued demand for supports and services to address student complexity, and the ongoing and urgent need for more learning spaces. Like sustained enrollment growth, the CBE's immediate is immediately and directly impacted by the cumulative impacts of inflation. Since 2018-19, inflation has eroded the purchasing power of the CBE's funding by more than 20%. Like many CBE families, the cost of every of everyday things necessary to operate is growing rapidly. From energy and insurance to supplies and services, the cost of everything is growing faster than funding. For example, a basket of goods that would have cost $100 in 2018-19 costs more than $120 today. That challenge is made all the more real by per-student funding that has not yet returned to 2018-19 levels. As a result, each dollar of funding must stretch further to achieve similar outcomes. Salary and benefit growth is another challenge. The CBE's world-class success in public education is founded upon a talented and professional cadre of staff committed to student achievement, equity, and well-being. Yet staffing dollars do not allow us to hire the same number of students that we did in the past. Funding that would have allowed us to hire 100 teachers in 2018-19 is only sufficient for 92 teachers today. That staffing reality is immediately and directly felt in our CBE schools. Space is another urgent challenge. As noted previously, the CBE will have grown by the equivalent of 11 large high schools from September 2022 through to September 2025. With finite space and growing enrollment, the CBE is seeing system-wide utilization rates approaching 100%. Consider that Alberta education generally targets a system-wide utilization rate of 85%. As utilization moves above 85%, there can be an impact on the quality of teaching and learning as non-traditional classroom space is brought into service as classrooms. As utilization rates climb, the CBE has seen an increasing number of schools move into overflow status. As of today, the CBE has 33 schools overflowing students to 48 receiving schools. We also have 12 of 22 high schools at or above 100% utilization. Given that context, trustees, the budget assumptions report before you today sets out the key planning assumptions that will be built into the 24-25 school year budget. That all said, however, the CBE, consistent with our shared values, is working very hard to provide the absolute best public education and learning possible within the funding and resources that have been entrusted to us. As always, our bias is towards flowing the maximum amount of funding possible to CBE schools to directly support teaching and learning in the classroom. Trustees, students come first, learning is our central purpose, and public education serves the common good. We welcome your questions at this time.
Trustees, any questions or comments on this report? Trustee Close, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair Hack. And I'm going to amend a couple of my questions because of your great introduction. I really have always appreciated the the budget assumption reports because budgets are our values in action. And I know that we'll be asking a lot of questions about programs and specific students. And I was going to ask if any of our values were compromised, but I think it's clear that our values are not being compromised when we have less funding to cover the costs of inflation and costs of services. But I think that's the message that I'm receiving loudly and clearly when I read this report is that these are challenging times. And I know that I wouldn't, I was, I had in my pending, you know, oh, when we get to the budget assumptions you know, "Oh, when we get to the Budget Assumptions Report, I'm going to ask a question about transportation to programs of choice." Because we've had previous conversations around how challenging that is for parents and what that service delivery looks like. But in reading the Budget Assumption Report, I can't ask that question because I know that's not a conversation that we can even entertain, I think, at this point in time. So I'm not going to ask if our values are being compromised because I heard loudly and clearly that they are not. But we are going to do the best we can to prioritize teaching and learning for classrooms. But we are challenged with the current reality that we have in front of us. So I'll let my colleagues ask the detailed questions, and I will look forward to listening.
Trustee Vukodinevich, go ahead.
Thank you Chair, thank you Chair Hack. My question is, how many additional students does the CBE expect in the 2024-25 school year? And how many additional FTE teachers are we expected to hire? And can you help me calculate the difference, please, in terms of the additional number of teachers we would need to hire to ensure classes, class sizes remain the same? And that's for if they were to remain the same? And then I just have an additional question too, if I may. If we were to reduce average class sizes across the system even by one student per class, what would that cost? And how many additional teachers would it take to reduce class sizes across the system by an average of just one student per class? And can you provide this answer slowly so I can write it down?
So through the chair, I think there was a number of questions in that question. So first, we are forecasting that the CBE's enrollment for the 24-25 school year will increase by approximately 9,000 students over the enrollment for the 23-24 school year. So year over year, about 9,000 additional students. As the Chief Superintendent mentioned, year over year, Alberta Education funding is increasing by $85 million. Just trying to go through all the parts of the question. How much would we have needed over and above the $85 million to maintain class sizes and grow services and supports? In relation to the 9,000 increase, approximately $12 million more would have been lovely. But alas, we don't have that, we have $85 million. Then you asked, how much money would it take to reduce the average system-wide class size by one? I think a good metric is $25 to $30 million. An average teacher's salary is about $108,000. We have 251 schools. So simple math would be 251 times... One teacher per school would get you probably $25, $26 million. But that isn't necessarily the metric you'd use to reduce it by one. But it's about the same level, $25 to $30 million to reduce overall class size by one. And then double that if you want to go down by two, to get to the target you want. Obviously, that's not something that's achievable within the resources that we've been allocated for the coming school year.
Just to follow up, and I'm not sure if administration has this number, but specifically, how many additional teachers do we expect we will be able to hire for the 2024-25 school year? And how many additional teachers would we need to cover the additional students we're having? And then what is the difference? Just to make sure that I'm not miscalculating that difference.
Through the chair, so a couple of points. As mentioned, the budget... Sorry, the Resource Allocation Method or RAM is rolling out to schools on Thursday. School-based administration will then be going through the process of figuring out what their staffing looks like in the face of anticipated enrollment. So we don't know at this point in time what the number of additional staff will be. Specifically, we would know generally. As you've seen in the Budget Assumptions Report, approximately 77% of everything that the CBE receives is spent on salaries and benefits. So if you take $85 million, multiply it by .77, that will give you a sense of what our salary and benefit increase would be. And then we would have to divide it by some blend of certificated staff and non-certificated staff out in the school land. So I don't have that information available to me. It certainly will be part of the budget report that comes to you later in May.
Thank you. I'm going to do a quick follow-up on this. I know you had mentioned, like, to keep us whole, an extra $12 million would be needed to maintain. Was that just based on student count or inflation as well?
Through the chair. So that answer is based on what would it cost next year to maintain class sizes, services, and supports? And the delta between what we've received and what we would require to achieve that, and it's about $12 million.
Thank you. Next, I've got trustee Dennis, go ahead.
Thank you so much. First, just a couple of comments. I want to thank Superintendent Grundy for his opening remarks. Really helped to, I think, explain very plainly the situation that we find ourselves in in terms of all of the things that the system is going to need to consider to be able to, you know, fit the services and supports that our students need within the funding that we receive from government. So thank you for telling that story. Also want to acknowledge the excellent report. The details that are provided there and the context that is provided there really does a great job of demonstrating the intersection of our story and the impact of budget on the work of the CBE. So just thank you so much for all of the tremendous detail that's in there. I think anybody that read the report would be able to have a really good idea of, you know, some of the challenges that we are looking to face, I guess, that we're going to face, but also that our priorities are consistent. As mentioned in the report, there's a number of mentions, I guess, of our EAL population, and we are seeing a significant increase in our students who are English as additional language learners. And they're becoming a larger percentage of the population that we serve. And so I'm just wondering, because of that, and it indicates in the report, you know, these students are coming to us, you know, later in their school career, and they require additional support. Wondering what impact we think might be felt on some of the specialized programs that we offer in our schools? So I'm thinking of LEAD, I'm thinking of ACCESS, I'm thinking of the CLASS, that sort of, some of those programs that are offered in our community schools. So are there any pressure points that we're keeping our eye on there? Will we have the ability to expand either the number of programs or the capacity within existing programs to be able to serve those students? Yeah, so that's my first question.
Through the chair, I think one of the pieces in recognizing we're going to have a discussion about very specific programs and anticipated impacts. With respect to our global allocation of dollars to support students, we are managing two things. One is to maintain. So our priority and approach that's been laid out in the Budget Assumptions Report is looking to maintain. I recognize that maintaining with increased number of students may have a different impact. So that's an important component. In addition to that, though, administration is not passively sitting, "How can we maintain?", but how also can we leverage other actions as part of the whole? And so recognizing the importance of monitoring pressure points and leveraging decisions that we may have made this year as a result of additions. There are opportunities for us and requirements, in fact, where we have assessed a decision to either increase or add supports to reduce future costs. So there, I just, the theme today is maintain, and where we can intervene to reduce future pressures is also that consideration. So I'm going to pass it over to Superintendent Nelson to address the more detailed portion of that. But I think in all of our discussion, those are two important threads to highlight as we move forward.
Through the chair, thank you Chief Superintendent Pittman. Trustee Dennis, I heard two specifics. One was around LEAD or how we're supporting our EAL students. And I believe you also mentioned ACCESS classes or special education classes. So as Chief Superintendent Pittman shared, maintain being a theme. We will maintain the number of LEAD classes that we have this current school year from into next year. I would add that last year, we did add seven classes. So that total number of classes will continue this year. In regards to special education classes, we are actually adding approximately six classes in DIV 3 and 4. I do want to highlight, though, those classes are really to, to use the word again, maintain the special education programming for students that would be in our EES program, so DIV 1, DIV 2. So as they move through the K-12 continuum, that we are able to support them with the supports they have had in the past.
Trustee Downey, go ahead.
Just to get back to inflation and a comment on page 5 of 14 of this report, which shows us a graph around the delta in funding per student and the inflation-adjusted funding per student. In the 2022-23 school year, this delta is $224 million. And I believe this represents a lost opportunity to really invest in public schooling and the CBE in order to maintain current class sizes, the supports and services that we have. This delta makes it incredibly difficult. We know that parents and caregivers want students to be able to go to their local school. They want easy access to transportation. They want to have reasonable class sizes. And they also would like their students to get the help they need when they need it. So this is a wonderful time to step up and correct this missed opportunity to really invest in public education in Calgary.
Next up, I've got trustee Bulger, go ahead.
Thank you Chair Hack. While speaking of maintaining programs and services, we know that as a large public school board in a large urban center, we have and continue to see an increasing number of students enrolling in the CBE with increased complexity. This complexity can range from mild to severe intellectual or physical disabilities to behavioral or communication challenges. I was extremely concerned to learn this weekend that the Calgary Catholic School Division will no longer be accepting students into their specialized programs to serve students with a variety of complex needs. And if I was a CCSD parent, I would be looking to another board to serve the needs of my child. So my question is, are we adding more spots or opening up more specialized classes to serve the needs not only of our increasing student population, and additionally, those who might be moving to a larger urban center like Calgary from smaller jurisdictions who may not offer these classes? And for those who live in the city and are not able to access services within Calgary Catholic School Division?
Through the chair. Following the theme that Chief Superintendent Pittman spoke about around maintaining and my past answer, we will be adding six complex needs classes to our system. However, those six classes will be in the DIV 3 and 4, and they will really maintain the opportunity for students as they move through the K-12 spectrum. So we will not be adding additional classes. I do want to also reinforce, though, that we provide professional learning and support within the classroom environment. And we do always start from inclusive learning environment within the Calgary Board of Education.
Trustee Bulger, do you have a follow-up?
Thank you for that. So if the CBE is maintaining the same number of spots and the number of classrooms available minus the ones you mentioned there for specialized programming, but we have many more students who require specialized settings, what will happen to them? Are they going to be accommodated in the regular classroom? I know we absolutely are going to do our best, but what will that reality look like on the ground? If you're able to share on that.
Through the chair, I'll address broadly that our current approach, that our current reality is the fact that we have many students now in our schools who are programmed for in an inclusive environment, meaning they're in a regular classroom, they share a range of supports. And this is always our preferred first starting point. And any students who enter into specialized classes, we continue to do program reviews relative to their individual program goals to ensure that it is the most appropriate placement. So we have many controls in place to check appropriate placement because there are times where students change and where we always look for the most inclusive environment. That is our starting point. And I think it's important to state that as a value in terms of all of our regular program schools. That said, our specialized classes that we currently have, we do not have the capacity to continue to expand at the rate of complexity entering the system. And I'll leave it there.
Trustee Vukodinevich?
Following along the same lines, when I visit CBE schools, I am floored by the high quality of specialized programming and specialized settings we offer to students with complex needs. These are highly valued by our families and highly necessary for students. Yet I'm dismayed to hear that the services the CBE offers to students with complex needs won't be able to keep up with growing demand given the limitations of the funding profile from the government of Alberta. Sometimes people use the concept of triage to kind of help determine, like, how, if you have limited spots, who gets in? And when people use the concept of triage, I picture that first kid with the greatest need getting in. But as a school trustee, I get an awful lot of emails and phone calls from parents and guardians of kids who are in that second spot in the triage. These are kids with learning disabilities who are asking for a Dr. Oakley-style school in their neighborhood, but they don't have one, or parents with a child with ADHD or autism who didn't quite make the cut to be that first kid in the triage for a spot in a specialized class. And I hear from parents that they're worried that their kids are falling through the cracks. When there are finite spaces in our enhanced education services but a growing number of students with complex needs, what is the impact on the students who fall just under the cutoff of what it will take next year to have needs that are considered complex enough to get one of these ever-more-limited spots? So what are the impacts on the, like, the kids who are just under the cutoff who don't make it in?
Through the chair. I think it's important to highlight a few specifics. First of all, we always are offering professional learning. We have targeted supports within our schools, and that could be through education assistance or central supports to support the teacher and student. We do have what we call CBRF, which is an opportunity that schools can come centrally. And if a student, let's say, arrives and has significant needs, that we can, kind of on an emergency basis, provide other supports. I also do want to, again, reiterate, as Chief Pittman highlighted, we do always work from an inclusive learning environment and provide the supports in the classroom and through a robust IPP process and through assessments and referral process, that we are constantly looking at the needs that are being met for the students that are in those programs, and also if we can better meet other students' needs by special ed programs when space is available.
Trustee Dennis, go ahead.
Thank you. So along a similar theme around students with complex learning needs, and I would just like to dig into PUF a little bit more. As a trustee, I have never received more emails or phone calls on any other topic in my six years as a trustee so far than PUF. So significant impact. And so the changes to PUF a couple of years ago created some challenges, you know, certainly for us and other, you know, metro divisions, but, you know, for divisions across the province. And so with this budget, we saw announced an increase to PUF funding in this budget and also additional increases over the next couple of years. And there's also an additional entrance opportunity for students who have... And there's also an additional entrance opportunity um for students who have been assessed, who are eligible then for PUF uh to be able to enter, you know, into a PUF-supported program. And so I'm hearing the theme, right? It's about maintaining, so I'm assuming we're going to ask the question anyways. Will this funding, this additional PUF, allow us to um expand our capacity, support these students? I'm I'm not naive enough to think that we are going to expand the number of locations, but could we could we expand maybe the number of students that we could serve? And then also regarding assessments, um, you know, I know at one point uh the HS staff who used to perform the required assessments on these, you know, children, you know, their preschool age obviously, um, and the assessment is required in order them for them to be eligible for PUF, that those staff were moved, deployed to other areas. Um, and I understand maybe haven't come back. Um, so I'm just wondering um if HS staff then are not doing those assessments, who is um taking on those assessments to identify those um children so that they can be eligible for that funding?
Through the chair, in this case, I will start, and the chief superintendent may fill in for me. Because the announced changes of PUF are actually focused primarily on pre-kindergarten, there is little impact at the kindergarten level, which is the focus of our programming, the CBE. Significant amounts of those funds are actually targeted at um learners that would be three and four years old. Uh, so that's the first part. The second part, um, to my knowledge and our knowledge, there has not been a return to the H AHS completing language assessments for the purpose of PUF eligibility. Alberta Health Services does provide speech and language services to preschool-aged children and uh speech services, um, including uh areas of uh praxia, stuttering, and uh other pieces that impact their language. Uh, CBE uh SLPs or our speech-language pathologists are usually individuals that perform the assessments required for children who are in kindergarten, and if they present with moderate or severe language delays.
Through the chair, and as I add on to Superintendent Nelson's uh response, just a highlight from the historical component, uh, in last year's budget, we did in fact add additional speech-language pathologists to support broadly, not solely within kindergarten, and we are maintaining those supports there. When we uh I I think the the important element provincially is that early intervention matters. Within CBE, our capacity to continue EDC or pre-K programming was challenged by the previous model, and as such, our focus is kindergarten and those supports. That has served us well, especially given our utilization challenges as well. We are continuing to look for other ways to ensure that students transitioning from uh pre-K programming in other organizations who provide those services within the city transition well. That has been a primary area of focus for us and will continue to do so. And as we look at our PUF supports, as students present differently over the course of the year during those different entry points, adjustments to those services and allocations are made based on student need. So from a process standpoint, we have strong processes to ensure we're adjusting within our available resources to serve the students as they present within our classrooms.
I'm gonna, I guess, gonna follow this up with an op- opportunity to just, we've been talking a lot about complexity and, you know, we're going to see an increase in complexity with numbers, with percent. If you want to highlight those numbers, I'll I'll let you do that. Um, but when when we talk about complexity, can you define that so that we're on a on a common ground, a common understanding of it? It's, my understanding is it's not just as you're saying, oh, well, I've got really complex students in my classroom. It's not, it's not this feeling of over overwhelming, because it is overwhelming. Um, but can you define what that actually entails and where we get our numbers from?
I'll start Chair Hack and then uh pass it over. When we define complexity within classrooms, Alberta Education lays out special education coding that has a series of set requirements. What we know with our population increase alongside English as an additional language, complexity can also account for the need for language acquisition. I would highlight again, as I've said in previous meetings, that there are differences around that complexity based on the age and stage of any child. So I I think that's an important component, because when we're introducing high degrees of academic language to an older student who is uh new to a country, finding settlement services alongside their family, managing those various things while acquiring language, that also for us operationally, while not defined as formally complexity, does contribute to uh those supports. Further to that, with that distinct and significant increase in student population as a result of immigration and interprovincial immigration, there is also a complexity around adjusting to that level of transition in and out of students as they reposition themselves. So when we speak about complexity broadly, it is a range of differential. One is defined by special education codes, that's very clear, and that's a formalized accounting, uh, our English as an additional language codes. But then we must also consider that we have undiagnosed codes that as a result of needing to access various assessments that would not be coded but would still be programmed for. And so we make sure that regardless of whether a code is present within the CBE, there still needs to be effective programming in place. And that's a a component that influences uh our understanding and assessment of where we place funding to provide or mitigate other costs later.
Complexity is complex. Um, trustee Bukodinovich, go ahead.
Thank you Chair Hack. The funding profile that the CBE received from the provincial government shows that the rule set out by the government of Alberta's fiscal framework to limit operating spending growth to that of population and prices is a ceiling, not a baseline. And we've already seen that the provincial government has not been adjusting funding to account for inflation since the twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen school year. If this practice were to continue and the provincial government were to continue avoiding an increase in funding to account for inflation, what are the potential impacts? And are the impacts compounded over time?
Through the chair, um, if government continues to support public education with funding that does not address both growth and inflation, then I would expect over time we'll see continued upward pressure on uh system-wide average class size. And I would expect that the services and supports for students would not be able to grow in uh step with enrollment growth. I think those would be the two biggest challenges I would see going forward. And there's, and then depending upon uh which path government chooses to go down on with regard to school-based infrastructure, I think we'll continue to see pressure uh on our existing facilities to accommodate that rapid growth. So those would be the three things that I think um we could expect based on the scenario that you just set out.
Justy Dennis, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, so I'm moving on to, I guess, some of our space challenges um that we have. And so I'm wondering if, um, do we have capacity to direct potentially more students into um some of our unique settings or other programs? So I'm thinking um of things like Discovering Choices, um, you know, over Jack James, CBE Learn, Chinook Learning. Just, um, you know, we heard today that twelve of twenty-two of our high schools are at over one hundred percent um capacity or utilization. And so just wondering if there are some opportunities to maybe maximize some of those other spaces, because I'm realizing, you know, in this budget environment, every single penny, again, it has always mattered, it's mattering more and more all the time. And being able to maximize, again, every cent, never mind every dollar, is there an opportunity to, you know, um, direct some students into those programs that might have capacity, you know, should that be suitable for additional students?
Through the chair, um, trusting Dennis, the first thing I would highlight is at the end you said suitability. So of course, those are uh programs, some of them are outreach programs, and so um they do support a specific profile student. Um, in regards to take your question and go part by part, uh, Jack James is a school that would still be able to accept uh students, and Discovering Choices may still have uh a bit of a threshold to accept students. However, they have a significant enrollment, and these are students that quite often we're supporting with their attendance, so the more and more they attend, the less and less space that we have. Uh, regards to Chinook Learning, Chinook Learning is currently located within um our high schools, which are at a high utilization rate. And so we're actually looking at alternatives of where we could actually house Chinook Learning, um, remembering this is for students that may need a few more courses to graduate or need to upgrade a course for their future readiness, potentially post-secondary. So it basically parallels our other high schools in that it is very tight for space. CBE Learn is an online school, uh, so there is always the potential to support more students if that was an avenue. But we also have to balance out the human capital cost uh when we consider CBE Learn, and we do have very much a robust uh online program for full-time students and concurrent enrollment uh for students to support their work at their uh home school, home high school.
Justy Dennis, go ahead.
Thank you so much, and um, I guess also along the lines of keeping no stone left unturned as we're trying to maximize everything that we're doing. So are we making adjustments also to our international student program, right? Because we've have a long, proud history of welcoming, you know, guest students in from around the world, um, but we have space challenges now, and so are we making any adjustments to um our international student program based on that?
Through the chair, yes. Uh, we're making reductions in the number of international students, and this number is decreasing, and specifically around high schools. This has actually started before this year, um, as our schools, our high schools specifically um are designated closed, open, and limited, that we have fewer schools that could accept international uh students. Um, and of course, we will continue to monitor the impact of international students, uh, both from an educational perspective and also from a space and resourcing perspective.
Trusty Bukodinovich, go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, the CBE provides a world-class education with results on international standardized tests among the top in the world, and this is why CBE families choose CBE schools, and it is why Albertans are for public education. Unfortunately, based on what I see in this bar before me, it is clear that the provincial government's funding to the Calgary Board of Education for the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five school year will not provide the necessary funding for our growing school district. While the CBE is nominally receiving an increase in funding, it's not nearly enough to account for enrollment growth and inflation. The funding that the CBE is receiving from the province does not address the impact of inflation or the real cost of supporting students with increasingly complex learning needs. This is not good news for Calgarians, especially not for the families of the hundred and forty thousand students who are enrolled in CB- CBE schools. I'm trying to understand how the impacts of this funding shortfall will be felt in our schools in the fall. So if I were to take the example of a kindergarten to grade four school with fewer than two hundred and seventy-five students, and let's say that this school is one of the thirty-three CBE schools that is overflowing with students and can't accept any more students, what might be the impact of the provincial government's funding profile on a school like that, on a K to four school in the upcoming twenty twenty-four, twenty-five school year?
So through the chair, uh, I'll start off by uh just noting once again that the school-based budgets are rolling out on April eleventh, and then the uh principals and their administration and staff will go through the process of uh figuring out how to deploy those dollars to best meet the needs of all those students. So um the direct and immediate impact on a school is not yet known until that process uh concludes. As I mentioned, overall system-wide average class sizes will see some upward pressure. The actual amount of that pressure in a specific school will depend upon all of the various factors, how many uh, what's the student enrollment year over year, what's the composition of those students? So it's really difficult to say. We did um reduce the rates slightly in the RAM, uh, but the overall RAM is up by fifty-eight million dollars across the system. So um I would expect we'll have more detailed information in the budget report later in May, and then we'll have to revisit that again in September when we see what actual enrollment looks like against our projections.
Justy Bukodinovich with a follow-up?
Yeah, I'll see maybe if I get uh can get more detailed, another age group. I, it is, it is tough to to hear, to see this bar. Um, I feel disappointed because I have great respect for the MLAs Albertans have elected to the provincial legislature. They're smart people, they care about Albertans. But this funding profile that the CBE has received is shortchanging the over hundred and forty thousand kids whose families have chosen to send their kids to the CBE's public schools. When we have massive enrollment growth, but the funding doesn't keep up with either the enrollment growth or inflation, then what the government of Alberta is really doing is is asking kids in Alberta to make do with less, um, while adults in Alberta get to keep spending money on pursuing provincial pension plans and provincial police forces and provincial departments of book approvers, and we see the results. We're going to get ballooning class sizes, we're getting sixty-five CBE schools over a hundred percent capacity, we're, we're seeing students traveling further and further to get to their closest designated regular public school, we're getting full construction funding for only one new school this year, and we're getting fewer supports for students with special needs. Uh, so again, I'm trying to understand how this schools will experience this funding shortfall in this coming school year. So if I were to take the example of a middle school with between two hundred and seventy-five and six hundred students, what might be the impact of the provincial government's funding profile on a school like that in the upcoming twenty twenty-four, twenty-five school year?
Through the chair, uh, I think what I'm, what we'll highlight is that uh our CFO highlighted that the RAM rates have been marginally reduced, which means that the per-student funding is reduced to a small degree, and essentially with the intent of being able to manage the increase of students and the number of additional teachers that need to be hired and spread out across two hundred fifty-one schools with the increase of enrollment. And in that context, using the middle school as an example, the challenge at this exact time, and this is not solely to deflect a response, but actually a reality of being very careful to st- state what an individual school will experience of that size because of the following. Picture a middle school of a grade six, seven, eight, and nine uh grade configuration. Of that grade six, seven, eight, and nine grade configuration, there are four sections within each grade. However, unbeknownst to us, we have a new crop of grade eight students who have just moved into the area as a result of new rentals opening, whatever the case may be. The school may have utilized all of their organization around what should be expected and applicable for a a general and appropriate class size and still provide classroom instruction on a series of options as required by the Alberta Program and Studies. And they may have allocated additional resources to purchase specific equipment through their RAM over the course of years to support specific student program, programming. They may have had that as part of their plan this year. When they receive their RAM, based on the adjusted RAM rates and an influx of new students in grade eight, they may need to reprioritize to still be able to hire the necessary staff to meet those needs. And the strength within our RAM model is in fact allowing that flight. And while it creates challenges to provide certainty in the board meeting at this time period of what those impacts are, it highlights our trust in principals in making good decisions around what their community needs and how to be responsive. What we know is, is that if a school remains at the same exact population that they have, and they make no adjustments, they will have a challenge using their current plans. They will have to make different choices. Some of those choices may be limited, and it might be about a change in prioritization and a redirection of funds to hire staff versus stuff. So we often use that uh in So we often use that in, in our discussions, we're prioritizing staff over stuff. And that is an important component that we're always looking to do. And so that may be a reality that you would experience, just to kind of play that out. But when speaking about direct and total FTE around all of, all of the middle schools or all of the elementaries, it is variable and it is highly contextual based on where students show up, when they show up and the type of needs they have, as well as the plans and expectations of the school.
Thank you. Trustee Bulger, go ahead.
Thank you and thank you everyone for everyone's questions and the responses. This is very multifaceted and complex for sure. So I just wanted to talk a little bit more about the lead classes. And that these, for people who may not know, these are for students who are new to Canada, might have arrived as immigrants, refugees with limited or no English, perhaps no formalized schooling at all, or who had interrupted schooling in their country. So when you look at this population or any high-needs, complex students as well, if we are capping, not capping, we are maintaining the number of spots available, I'm very concerned about what the reality of this does look like in the regular classroom for those students and for the regular classroom students and their teachers. Because, you know, an inclusion, absolutely the most we can, but where it isn't suitable, how does this look? And also, I guess on that note, are there any community partners, external agencies or nonprofits that also help support newcomers to Canada and the CBE and helping them serve their needs?
And to press your question, so the first part is that we will continue to support students in their classrooms. And I do want to reiterate that there still may also be spaces in some of our lead classes, but we're maintaining the number. And that within the classroom, we support students using the CBE K to 12 ESL proficiency benchmarks. And then we also have best practice documents to support those teachers. And we have central supports of individuals that provide professional learning. In regards to your second part of your question about what are other partners that we work with to support students, we continue to maintain and strengthen our partnership with key organizations such as the Calgary Bridge Foundation for Youth, the Calgary Catholic and Immigration Society and Immigrant Services Calgary. The CBE has a long history of strong relationships with these groups. And these groups both provide support at our Welcome Centre and also provide ongoing support for many of our students and their families. So we will continue to access those resources and supports that we can access within the larger Calgary community.
Trustee Dennis, go ahead.
Thank you so much. And I feel like I'm nickel and diming with this question, but I'm going to ask it anyway because I think that's our reality in terms of, like say, watching where a recent is going. So we do experience from time to time a clawback of funds from the, provided funding. And we do receive a clawback of funds in situations where perhaps we've welcomed students into our schools. You know, we're starting to educate them even though they aren't necessarily eligible yet for provincial funding because they don't have the necessary paperwork in place. And so we do get penalized for doing that with a clawback of funds. So I'm wondering about, you know, how are we supporting families to ensure that students have the necessary documentation to be eligible for provincial funding for education? And my question is ultimately then is just to minimize that clawback. It's not a great surprise, so just would like to minimize those dollars that are being clawed back in that situation.
Through the chair, so thank you for the question, just for the, to make sure all on the same page. So the government of Alberta provides funding for eligible students. And the determination of the eligibility of a student is largely driven by having appropriate documentation on file to support their eligibility. Government then undertakes an annual sampling of the enrollment of a school jurisdiction to assess whether the appropriate information is on file to establish the eligibility of the student. So as you've pointed out, we're a large organization with more than 140,000 students, many of whom come from very different places around the world. And so it is a challenge to make sure that all of the appropriate documentation is on file to confirm that eligibility. Having said that, the CBE does not want to return money to the provincial government for students who are ineligible. So we have implemented a number of different mechanisms to encourage and support schools in obtaining the appropriate documentation. That would start with the Welcome Centre, for example, for newcomers to Canada. When they go through that process, we're also speaking to them about what the appropriate documentation is and making sure that we have that in hand. One of the biggest factors that we see is the student demographic form. And so if I could put a shout out to our, our school community, do everything you can to get that student demographic form into your school because that does confirm their eligibility to receive funding. And that minimizes our return to the provincial government for any ineligible students. So training and support, the Welcome Centre, constant monitoring by people across the system, including in finance, to make sure that schools are aware of what they need to collect and that they have it on file. And then at the end of the year, when we go through the verification process, it's working with the provincial government to resolve as many anomalies as possible to maximize the number of students that are eligible for funding.
Trustee May, go ahead.
Thank you. So just a process question. Before is mentioned that the RAM is being rolled out April 11th, which is in two days, goes to the school. That each school may fill the RAM differently depending on their complexity and what they're made up with. And that you said, you know, focusing on staff, not necessarily staff. But I'm wondering what, what's the communication once the school staff has this budget? So what parental input are they looking for to see, you know, what, what parents value in their local school? And, you know, what communication sent to them with, with what the reality of their actual school looks like?
So every year our schools, oh, through the chair. Trust me, every year our schools do a survey, it's a budget survey that they do with their parents. In regards to the resource allocation model, we also do provide system messaging and share with them the overarching budget and considerations for them. So they, the other avenue of course is principals are always working with their school councils to also have an understanding of the desires of the community as well.
Through the chair, I might add that, so as indicated, the RAM or the resource allocation method is rolling out to schools on Thursday. Tomorrow, we'll be having a call with all principals and setting out what our CBE budget context is. So very much similar information to what you're receiving in the bar here today. The intention of that is to allow them to be well-informed about the CBE reality and to support them in their communications with school communities and also school-based staff.
And through the chair, I'll also add that within the school support model, one of the important pieces is that our schools are highly connected to their education directors. And so the education directors walk through the resource allocation model and also around the staffing processes to maximize our resources to support all of our students.
Any other questions or comments on the report? Trustee Close, go ahead.
I need to share this. The, I'm so impressed with the report that's in front of us because it does demonstrate that we are committed to the values that are important to us. It is also prudent, it has tremendous integrity and transparency of the data. I'm struggling because I, I think it's also clear that the provincial budget is not keeping pace with growth and rising costs and does not provide us with the funding necessary for meeting our needs. And I'm struggling because we've had very fruitful, good conversations with government representatives about our needs on the capital side and they understand those and they are trying to address that. But we have not been successful yet in demonstrating that just the cost of inflation, just the, the per-student funding remaining at the lowest level is a conversation that is necessary and we need to have it. And so I know we will have those conversations. But I'm struggling because I know we have government, government representatives that think that they've given us additional money. And that maybe for the, their overall budget, they've reduced spending growth to less than population growth and inflation. But they probably feel at this time that they've provided us with what we need. And I think we have to make a really strong case. And I think the questions that we've had today demonstrate that we have a strong case in front of us that our needs are not being met and we do not have the funding necessary for a growing school district like Calgary Board of Education. And that we need to reinvest, as has been mentioned earlier, in the importance of publicly funded schools and a publicly funded school system.
Trustee Bukidinovich, go ahead.
Trustee Close worded that so eloquently and so clearly, I'm very grateful for that. I'll just echo in a lesser way that one of the most important things that we need our provincial government to do for us is to pool together the tax dollars of Albertans to fund education. Unfortunately, I feel that the funding profile that the provincial government is providing to the CBE is a disgrace for a rich province boasting about the Alberta advantage. I'm worried that a generation of Alberta's students will be paying for these steep budget shortfalls by not reaching their full, this, sorry, this steep budget shortfall by not reaching their full potential. And this is a risk not just for Alberta's children, this is a risk for Alberta's continuing prosperity. When Alberta's children are at a risk of not reaching their full potential, then Alberta's economy will be at risk of not reaching its full potential. And it's not like the money isn't there. In Alberta, every year, more than $250 million of taxpayers' hard-earned money flows out of public education to private schools and governmental charter schools. Alberta invests the least money into public education of any province in Canada and simultaneously spends the most money on private schools of any province in Canada. So the money is there, but not for the hard-working taxpayers in Alberta who choose public schools. I know a lot of teachers and a lot of our parents voted for the current government. I know the smart and caring MLAs in our current government value public schools. And I know that Alberta families want the provincial government to protect and invest in the CBE's strong public education system. So I don't know what it'll take, but I would love to see the provincial government's funding increase to keep up with the CBE's enrollment growth and with inflation.
Any other questions or comments?
Thank you so much for, for those, answering those questions and providing information. You can see how much work has gone into providing this and then being able to roll out to, to principals to make decisions come Thursday. Next on our agenda is item 7.2, Chief Superintendent's Update. Trustees, I understand you have some questions on this report. Trustee Close, go ahead.
Thank you Chair Hack. And probably some of these questions could have been asked during the budget assumptions, I'm realizing. But I do want to make a comment that I'm always grateful for the updates in this report because it does showcase our tremendous language programs, I'm very proud of those, and our community partnerships. I know personally, I was sad to not be able to attend the round down, round dance at Henry Wiswood. But so delighted that we take the time and opportunity to, to celebrate in community. I think that's important and I'd love to see that going forward. I also was grateful to read about Jordan's principle, like I knew about Jordan's principle, like under learning excellence and, and, but it's nice to be reminded about that, that really important work that our system can do in support of student success. And so my question is more from a place of curiosity and also because of a challenging conversation I had about not supporting the exceptional status during the Results 2 report for students who self-identify as Indigenous. Because there is a worry that our system will no longer provide the equitable supports necessary for student success. So can you provide, this is going to be an interesting question to ask you after our budget assumptions. Can you provide assurance that this great work and focus will continue?
Through the chair, I'm, I'll start just maybe because you raised, what would be administration's actions if the exception were not to exist? Is fundamentally the crux of part of that question. And one of the important points that I wish to make is that the focused work of supporting equitable and effective learning in alignment with the TRC calls to action to education remains, regardless of an exception or otherwise. Those elements remain a focus and are laid out through the board policy, in fact, on results and in the manner in which we report them. We continue, and you've seen evidence of adjustments to areas of focus in these supports. And those adjustments occur as a result of student data, identification of staff capacity and areas that then are highlighted and targeted over time. And that consideration of overtime is in some cases annually, in other cases over multiple years. That will continue regardless and must do so. So I'll just start with that and then specific to Jordan's principle, I'll pass it over to interim superintendent Mills.
Through the chair, thank you, Chief Superintendent Pittman. So specific to Jordan's principle, we continue to collaborate with the First Nations Health Consortium in Alberta to submit an actual group application. Important to recognize that the parents and guardians play a key role. And so if successful, we will continue to work to support eligible students in getting the supports that they need.
Trustee Close, go ahead.
And we did touch on this area that I'm interested in. I really, I can't, I will always try to find an opportunity to applaud CBE for that Student Wellbeing Symposium. Inspirational is easy word to say, but I think we were also grateful to be included. It's just so wonderful to be in a room with students, especially when our value as students come first, to be able to center even our work on, on, on what we want to do in our, just as governors and, and as policymakers. And I know you can't answer this question specifically in detail because this is the work from our board's perspective because we will be reviewing results policy. But when I look at social wellbeing and, and some of, and what's been updated in today's update, it's such a necessary focus and it's such important work in the system. So I'm wondering if you can comment briefly, how can we as governors ensure that this important work is connected and continues? What does it look like from a results policy perspective, I guess is also the question. But really, trustees will have that conversation.
Through the chair, really looking forward to the opportunity to engage in that results policy and then obviously explore together the, the values of the board. To support that exploration and consideration and development of policy, it is going to be important to consider the ecosystem within which we live currently, where we have been and are with our current policy and what else is coming. And so we have that opportunity to look at now, the future and the past and consider what those next steps are. In that ecosystem, it will be important to consider the impacts and layout of new curriculum, the consideration of the values that are connected to your three, results three, four and five policies. And to then also ask yourselves the question of what is the focus and expected outcomes for students across the system in alignment with those values? Because then you, that drives administration to those priorities. So as we have these discussions around what you see lived out through the Student Wellbeing Symposium or through the Chief Superintendent Student Advisory Council or in discussions in school councils, as you hear from parents what their values are or the discussion around the education plan, you have the opportunity to ensure that key areas are addressed through that policy. And our work in making sure that we've presented that ecosystem in a way that's digestible, especially when we think about the future and the continuing conversations around digital citizenship and the impact of AI as an example, those are important considerations. Those are important considerations that will inform the way this work continues regardless of, of other components, because that's, that's the strength of your governance model and our opportunity together.
Trustee May, go ahead.
Thank you. Speaking of curriculum, I feel like we're always kind of in this cycle of piloting and implementing. It talks a bit about here in the update about resources. And I'm just wondering, once we do finish piloting and we have feedback and resources and materials used, do those guide the implementation across the system or how does, how does that work interconnect?
Through the chair. So first of all, do you want to highlight that the actual chief's update did talk about our model for providing resources and that we're using the viable resources, funding that we receive from the Alberta government? And we have a central opportunity that teachers and principals can see what those resources are, how they, we work with our partners and procurement so they can access those. In regards to your specific question around piloting, if we think of the K to six pilot, where we're currently now in K to three and rolling out four to six science next year, we had approximately 20 teachers. Those teachers, through surveys and also opportunities to meet and also meet with participants from other boards and also from the ministry, are actually able to give feedback. And that feedback actually helps support the resources that are needed to support that program. So that direct feedback from piloting does help with the implementation of resources and supports for the new curriculum.
Any other questions or comments? We'll take a short, I guess, six-minute recess and return back at 1:45.
All right, we're going to reconvene. Next on our agenda is item 8.1, Capital Reserve Report to Support Enrollment Growth. Chief Pittman, would you please introduce the report?
Chair Hack and trustees, today we introduce a report requesting capital reserve funds to support the unprecedented enrollment growth being experienced across the city in two ways. Firstly, it proposes a new centralized and more proactive approach to the procurement of furniture, fixtures, and equipment for CBE schools, welcoming new students into their classrooms on a daily basis. Secondly, it recommends the relocation of six modulators to two high-priority schools that were identified on your modular classroom submission to Alberta Education last October, but these were omitted from the government's approval provided last month. At this time, I will ask Superintendent Breton to provide additional details.
Board of Trustees, as you've just heard, this report requests funding to support CBE schools across the city. These schools are or will be faced with the greatest enrollment pressures. These are the ones that are being targeted. The first request being brought to you is specific to furniture, fixtures, and equipment, or FFNE, required by schools to accommodate growth. So whereas in the past, school administrators could typically easily manage the trickle of students that they would experience joining the school throughout the school year, and absorb also with that the procurement requirements and the, for to, to, to purchase any additional desks or chairs that might be required, and of course, the administrative effort that would be required to, to, to identify where that furniture and, and procure that and get it into their school. Today's situation calls for different measures. Today's higher enrollment numbers and tempo means that the challenge of securing furnishings in a timely fashion for new students is consuming an increasingly important portion of school administrator time and of their school's funding. Moreover, when CBE schools purchase individually, they do not benefit from bulk purchase discounts, not to mention that the delivery timelines may be exceedingly long for these much larger quantities that they're requiring. Accordingly, the proposal before you seeks to give school administrators the ability to concentrate more of their limited time and school resources on student success, this by centrally procuring furnishings in bulk for them and then having these readily available for distribution to schools experiencing rapid enrollment growth. This initiative would be in place until the 2026, '27 school year, after which time it is currently anticipated that enrollment growth levels should return to more manageable levels experienced prior to the '22, '23 school year when we started to see these phenomenal enrollment years. The second proposal before you seeks capital funds to relocate six modular classrooms to two high-priority schools identified in last October's modular classroom program submission. Now, you'll recall that in that submission that you approved last October, there were a total of 12 modular classrooms that were being proposed to be relocated to three schools in high need. Since last month's Alberta Education modular classroom announcement only covered the relocation of half of those, six of those, this proposal recommends that the CBE funds the relocation of the remaining six units, this to support as many students as close to home as possible. The fact that this proposal is being brought to you today instead of waiting until next fall's annual modular classroom program submission is also a reflection of the need for accelerated approvals designed to rapidly increase school capacity. This especially in light of how the total capacity that will be created by the modulars approved last month only covers the average student enrollment growth being experienced by the CBE in a single month so far this school year. So further underscoring the need for supplementary local school or student accommodation measures such as this one. And so with that being said, we'd be pleased to answer any questions you might have at this time.
Trustees, any questions or comments on the report? Trustee Close, go ahead.
I only have two, but I can ask one at a time and get back in the queue. Can you remind us where our capital reserves come from?
Through the chair. So the CBE's capital reserve is funded almost exclusively from the disposition of school properties over time.
Trustee May, go ahead.
Along that same line with the capital reserves, I think in the report it says with these approvals in place, the projected balance would be $55.1 million. Can you speak to this amount for a board of our size? And is there any risks in drawing from the capital reserves?
Through the chair. It's a great shame that my colleague from the general council's office isn't here today because my answer is going to be, it depends. It's kind of a lawyer joke. So what I would say is at $55 million on sort of replacement value of our school infrastructure of $5.2 billion, we're approximately at 1% of that invested base, which is low. If government continues to approve new schools at the rate they have been, then I don't believe $55 million is inadequate. If government was to approve the capital plan that was recently supplemented with 21 new schools, $55 million is probably inadequate. So that's why I say it depends. It really depends on the rate of new school construction and also what we're doing with schools that may be underutilized and need to be disposed. So that relationship will really matter.
Trustee Close?
You actually answered my next question.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on the report? Okay. Is there a trustee who wishes to bring forward a motion regarding the report? Trustee Bolger?
Thank you. That the Board of Trustees approves a budget expenditure of up to $11.4 million over the next three school years ending 2026, '27 from capital reserves for the establishment and management of a furniture, fixtures, and equipment repository.
Do you trustees have any questions about the motion? Okay. The motion on the floor is that the Board of Trustees approves the budget expenditure of up to $11.4 million over the next three school years ending 2026, '27 from capital reserves for the establishment and management of a furniture, fixtures, and equipment repository. Trustee Bolger, would you please open debate?
I will, and I'm so glad we have a new acronym in our CBE list. So I'd like to start by thanking our administration for having the foresight to plan for the approximate 17,000 new students we're expecting over the next three years. Having somewhere to sit is always appreciated, as well as all of the other furnishings required to set up classrooms in every space available to us, including foyers, learning commons, and in the six new modular classrooms. Supporting schools and principals by removing the administrative burden of ordering desks, chairs, smart boards, and everything else required in their learning spaces, the establishment and management of an FFNE repository is of tremendous value. With students arriving in our schools every single day, this is one way in which we can support our administration in creating welcoming, caring, and respectful environments that focus on teaching and learning rather than procuring furnishings. The FFNE repository initiative appears to be well thought out with the consideration being made to maximize efficiencies in purchasing power, leasing appropriate warehouse space to store, assemble, and distribute furniture to schools, and ordering quarterly to maintain inventory which can be rapidly deployed to schools as needed. The idea is to carry classroom sets of furnishings to ensure prompt distribution with maximum cost and time efficiency is paramount, and I welcome my colleagues' comments on this motion.
Trustees for round one, I've got trustee Downey, go ahead.
I'm happy to support this motion because I see it as one of the examples of how CBE is forward-thinking and looking to maximize the dollars we have to add up to some savings as we go along. So very happy to support.
Trustee Close, go ahead.
Echo both trustee Bolger and trustee Downey's comments. Nothing further to add, but it's a brilliant report.
Trustee Dennis?
Happy to support this motion and really like this initiative. I think it is a number example of how CBE is effective and efficient with the dollars that we receive as we possibly can be, but also highlights again another impact of incredible enrollment growth on the system. It's not just that we need additional classrooms. It's not just that we need additional educators. It's not just that we need additional classrooms. It's not just that we need additional educators and other support for our students. It's everything else that they also need, the tools that they need in their hands to learn, the furniture that they need to do their work at. And so enrollment growth, like we are experiencing and we are thrilled to have all of these students coming our way, we do important work here. And but this does highlight again that it's not only educators in space, it's everything else that a student needs to be successful. So happy to support this motion.
Trustee Vukadinovich?
Sometimes it's not staff, it's stuff. So I will support this motion.
Any other trustees for round one debate? Round two, any trustees wishing to enter or re-enter for round two debate? Trustee Bolger, would you like to close?
I will, thank you. The FFNE repository initiative will further enhance the CB's learning environments by ensuring each school's allocated funding can be focused on educational resources and by reducing this administrative burden on school staff. The alleviation of approximately four million dollars per year on school budgets could translate into schools directing dollars back towards staffing and supports for students as opposed to purchasing furnishings, furniture and equipment. As well as it could return approximately five hundred hours of school and system administration time back to the system. I would ask my fellow trustees to support this motion in support of our staff, students and administration.
With that, I'll call the question. Those in favor of the motion? That is carried unanimously. Are there any other motions on the report? Trustee Dennis, go ahead.
I heard that and I didn't respond. Thank you so much. So the motion I'd like to bring forward is that the Board of Trustees approves a budget expenditure of up to one point three million dollars from capital reserves for project expenses related to the relocation of six existing modular classrooms.
Do you trustees have any questions about the motion? The motion on the floor is that the Board Trustees approves a budget expenditure of up to one point three million from capital reserves for project expenses related to the relocation of six existing modular classrooms. Trustee Dennis, would you please open debate?
Thank you. So as we know, our twenty twenty-four, twenty-five modular classroom program submission requested sixty-eight new modulators and the relocation of twelve to help ease the demand for learning spaces in some of our communities. The province granted us twelve new modulators and the relocation of six. We don't have a choice but to access our limited reserves to fund the relocation of these additional six modulators. Prairie Sky and Canot are high priority sites in terms of our need for additional space. Both sites are operating at over one hundred percent capacity with students being overflowed to six schools between both sites. These overflow schools are also reaching their capacity. These additional modulators will allow these schools to start the process of recalling overflowed students back into their community school. However, even with the additional space provided by these modulators, these schools will remain on overflow. I receive regular calls and emails from families who are struggling to send their young children to schools that are sometimes considerably outside of their community. And there is frustration that they have a community school a few blocks away where the child cannot be accommodated due to lack of space. What we need are more schools built in our new and growing communities. But modulators are a way that we can provide relief in our enrollment pressures in the shorter term.
Trustees for round one of debate? Trustee May, go ahead.
I think our theme has been enrollment pressures. So I'm happy to support this. I think it's just another lever that we can use internally to manage a bit of this growth. It doesn't manage much of it, but it's something. And so I think it's really important that we wherever we can internally ease the burden and just try to get those kids closer to home because I think we hear that across the system and I think it's of importance to us.
Trustees for round one, trustee Downey, go ahead.
I'm also happy to support this motion. I think it's another example of how the CBE is doing what it can within the limitations that we have to welcome students into learning spaces that are desperately needed.
Trustees for round one? I'll take I'll take a moment to enter here and this is absolutely something that I hear all the time. These are values that our families have that are learning closer to home. It also has an effect on our transportation costs. It's not going to completely eliminate overflow schools, but will reduce again, values for our families, values that we hold. And like trustee Downey said, it is it is responsive to the needs that we have within the confines of our our role, within our budget, what we have. But doing everything we possibly can to meet students where they're at.
Any other trustees for round one? Move to round two, any trustees wishing to enter or re-enter? Trustee Dennis, would do you wish to close?
Nothing further to add, thank you.
With that, I'll call the question. Those in favor of the motion? That is carried unanimously. This brings us to the consent agenda of our meeting. All items not removed from the consent agenda will be deemed to be approved with the agenda. This concludes the public portion of today's agenda and the board has two strategic planning matters to deal with in private. Like to thank all of you who joined us for this meeting. Our next public board meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, April twenty-third, twenty twenty-four.